Hey folks, seeing as it is now 7:04, we'll call this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, generalized chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, Channel 9, Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37, Verizon Files, and livestream at wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 829-7854-5537. Then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted and press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in the order they enter the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. Our votes will be roll call in alphabetical order, and as always, thank you to John O'Neill and the town's IT department and our friends at WCTV. Welcome to the February 8, 2021 Meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. We'll go to roll call, Mr. Bendel.
President.
Mr. Kyra.
President.
Mr. De Palma.
President.
Ms. Omahoney.
Here.
And I am present. All members are present. I would ask those who are able to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Let's be legions, in flag of the United States of America, in two in the common, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. We do have transmitting of the treasury warrants numbers 31, 31A, 32, and 32A. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. De Palma, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Discussion, see none. Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney.
Yes.
And I'll make it unanimous. We do have one set of minutes. It's the January 25, 2021 minutes. We have a motion.
Show move.
Second.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Kyra, I believe seconded by Mr. Bendel. Discussion. See none. Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney.
Yes.
And I am a yes. It is unanimous. Passives. And that brings us to our first appointment, which is with our fire chief, William Kavanaugh, for an update on COVID-19. Welcome, chief.
Hello, how are you?
Good, and you?
I'm doing well, doing well.
Good to hear. So where are we?
So as far as public safety goes, it's my normal two-week status quo. We're doing what we can. We're, we are seeing some calls for service that involve potential COVID cases, but you know, our personnel's handling it as they have from the beginning with some extra precaution and some little deeper disinfection when they get back. Shelley was not able to be here tonight, so I also have her update. Currently, we have 76 positives and we have 200 in quarantine. The second dose for the first responder clinic is this coming Thursday, the 11th, so we were able to get the doses for those, for the first responders that have already received the initial dose. There's no clinics this week for the general public. Masti, Department of Public Health has been very stingy with the vaccines for whatever reason. Local boards of health are not getting the vaccines like it has been, like it's been planned to have them out. So unfortunately, they're not going to have anything this week. You know, pay attention to the website for the board of health. I know between the website on the town side and Shelley's office through social media is very good about putting out that information. I know that Terry Masiello from the Elder Services Center is very good at looking at that. But Shelley did want me to encourage people to either dial 211 or to visit the websites, maimmunizations.org. So it's all one word, maimmunizations.org, and see if you can find one of the mass sites like Gillette Stadium. I know they're opening one in Lowell this week, and I believe one in Lawrence as well, or Lynn. So they are coming closer to where we are. I know the other day or last week, they were just Gillette or Springfield. They were kind of a haul. These ones are getting a little bit closer. And from what I've heard, most of them are going pretty well. They're well organized. Not a lot of downtime, not a lot of waiting because they, I believe they understand that their, you know, their main focus right now is the elderly population, so they can't stand for a long period of time outside. So you know, I'm sure she'll have that up on her website if she doesn't already. And you know, hopefully, we can get back on track here in the next couple of weeks and get, you know, get some immunizations into Wilmington. I know the last clinic she had filled up incredibly fast. She's only get, she only gets 100 doses of the wax, so it filled up extremely quick. So just keep an eye on it and you know, hopefully, we can get everyone immunized that would like it.
Thank you, chief, and thank you in your department for your efforts as well because it's certainly been a long haul. We all appreciate you folks working under uncomfortable circumstances.
Thank you.
Wanted to open it up to board members for a question or comment. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, chief. Chief, a just quick question to start. Did I hear you correctly? The active cases is 76?
76 positives currently. That was as of 6:50 last night.
That's great. I just wanted to confirm. That's great. By my count, Shelley's last update, that's down 62 from just four days ago. She had us at 138. So obviously trending in the right direction, which is very good news. So I just want to give a quick plug to really kind of everybody involved. Shelley, yourself, chief, both police and fire, and then Terry Masiello's group, and even him and John O'Neill, trying to get the word out to everybody about this information. I was concerned at the last meeting, as were my colleagues, about, you know, seniors being able to find out news and information on Facebook or Twitter. And to the credit of Terry Masiello and her staff, they've been working the phones nonstop. Saw it with my own eyes on Friday. And so I really want to give kudos to everybody who's putting out the word into the group who are working the phones. In fact, I tried a call from a senior last week, and Terry called today to follow up with that person, although we didn't have a vaccination for them this week, as you mentioned a few minutes ago. That person, that Wilmington resident, was able to get vaccinated at Gillette just today. And so kudos to everybody who's getting the word out, working the phones. And one last plug for our veteran service office, who put out a great message last week. If you missed, Bedford VA is vaccinating 60-plus. And so I know of at least one veteran from Wilmington that made his way over there on Friday. So if you're a veteran above the age of 60 and are interested in getting a vaccine, that's an option as well. I want to just give everybody a kudos for a great team effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Mr. De Palma?
Yes, chief. Have you noticed an uptick at all in mental health issues?
Yeah, since kind of the inception, I mean, in the very beginning, March, April last year, and I know Cory's on for later. He's my dispatch supervisor, but he could attest to the fact that I think Chief Desmond has it. In the very beginning, it was eerily quiet. We didn't have a lot of kind of the regular service calls that we would normally get. And as it's progressed and as it's moved along, we have had the uptick in some mental health calls. And unfortunately, I know that I, you know, discussed with Chief Desmond, you know, the substance abuse calls have ticked up quite a bit as well. So we are seeing some impact on the local community, probably due to stress or whatever, you know, the case may be. A lot of people are out of jobs. A lot of people are, you know, with the changing of administration on the national level, there's some uncertainty there as well. So we are seeing it a little bit. Samantha Reeve's been great. Anytime we have the mental health patients after we've transported, we always refer, and I know the police does the same thing. They'll refer to her to make sure that she gets to follow up and render whatever assistance we can. So it really works out well. And to what Mr. Bendel said, you know, we are fortunate in Wilmington. I know a lot of my colleagues are kind of on an island in their own communities that they have one department or two departments that they work well with. Here in Wilmington, we, it really is a team effort. All the department heads really communicate well with each other and help out. And in this case, you know, I'm sorry, Lou and Terry Masiello just reaching out to their individual kind of target audiences has helped quite a bit with Shelley and Kim and Tracy getting as many people the information they need to get vaccinated as possible.
Thank you, chief. I just want to also echo what Mr. Bendel said. We're lucky in Wilmington. We're lucky we have the fire, police, health department, seniors, everyone. Everyone that's just pulling together and seeing how people aren't hiding from it in the town government. They're out there working, and I just have a lot more respect for seeing how everyone is working and working as a team. And I want to congratulate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kyra.
Thank you. Chief, thank you for the update. I appreciate the information. And certainly, I do echo my colleagues' comments about the whole various departments working in a team effort to really support the community. I do have a question based on a phone call that I received, and I just want to, and I don't know, chief, if you're the right person to answer it. Probably Shelley would be, or town manager Hull. One of the elderly residents of the town called up the senior center to make an appointment, and they said that they were, unfortunately, there are no vaccine remaining for them to have an appointment. But they would be called back when vaccine was available. So is that, is that true? Or do they have to continue to call the senior center? Because they were told that they would be called back. So do seniors call the senior center, leave their name and number, and then get called back for when the vaccines are available?
In all honesty.
I don't know what to tell, you know, the individual.
Yeah, in all honesty, I don't know if myself or Jeff have the answer to this. This is really a Shelley question. I'll make sure that I relay this to her. That would be news to me. I know that with the limited supply they get, like Shelley said, they're only getting maybe 100 a week, and even this week, we didn't get any. I think a running waiting list, I don't believe that is around. Again, I don't know for sure, and I'm gonna check with Shelley, and I will get you an answer tomorrow. But I also, you know, I know we've said it a few times, I talked to Kim Mitek today, and she sounds like she's in a thousand different directions right now. And I believe the whole health department is, Tracy's been doing all of our vaccinations. She's been doing contact tracing. She's been getting immunizations, as has Shelley, Kim, we have Wynona, and we have another two part-timers. They've been inundated, and I think them calling people back on a list, I don't, I don't know if that's true. That might be something that Shelley and Terry have worked out. But before I give you a solid answer, let me talk to her, and I'll absolutely, I'll send it back to Mr. Hull and make sure that he gets it back out to the board, and we'll put it up on the website on what the best method is to get an appointment. I know right now it's to call, but if they did set something up, we'll make sure that that's out there if it is in fact in place.
All right. Yeah, thank you. You know, I can imagine that everybody's going crazy and trying to keep up with the vaccinations. I just want to make sure that these individuals aren't waiting for a call back when they should not be waiting for a call back. So I appreciate that, you know, getting back to me so I can call them up and let them know which way, you know, how to handle it. Thank you.
All right. So unless there's nothing else, then we will move forward to our next appointment. But Chief Kavanaugh, stay right there because they're coming up right after.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if you could, if I could, just a couple of quick points. So the question was raised about, you know, the impact of COVID or something to that effect. I did want to just note, I in fact was communicating with the veterans director earlier today and was asking similar questions, and he responded via email noting that the suicide rate for veterans is up 20% since COVID and is up 30% for active duty since COVID, which is certainly not a good sign. The other thing I would just note, I had a call this afternoon from Representative Robertson's office inquiring about the prospect of setting up some kind of regional distribution. Actually, they were looking at identifying sites for a regional setting for vaccines, perhaps looking at three or four communities. And he was, the gentleman from the representative's office was talking about trying to identify refrigeration capacity. And I explained that quite frankly, the issue isn't capacity of storage, it's getting the vaccines. And that explained that Shelley had requested 1,500, and we received 100 last week and are not scheduled to get any this week. So, you know, I posed the question as to whether the Department of Public Health is, is there a real direction essentially to establish these larger-scale vaccination centers like Doubletree in Danvers and Gillette and other places that have been mentioned? Or are they in fact going to be utilizing the local boards of health? The answer wasn't clear. He was going to check into it, but I think that really remains to be a big question mark. Certainly, our board of health is geared up, and Shelley's ready to go, has it, you know, arrangements made with the Shriners, but it doesn't seem to be a clear sense from what we're getting as to whether the state is expecting local boards of health to really have a meaningful participation, or whether it's going to be these larger centers.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hull. At this point, I would welcome Michael Snepalsky. Did I pronounce that name correctly, sir?
You're correct.
All right. He's of the Red Heat Tavern. We've got some requests to change the manager of Red Heat Tavern from Dennis A. Martin to himself, Michael Snepalsky. So, Mr. Snepalsky, if you want to introduce yourself and let folks know a little bit about you, and any changes that might be coming to the Red Heat Tavern?
Um, right now, I've been with the Red Heat Tavern in Wilmington for three and a half years. I've been the general manager for the last year here during this pandemic. I'm a Wilmington resident as well. So we're hoping that once the vaccinations and everything comes back to life, that we'll be back to regular business. But right now, we're operating at about 60%. And I've been in the restaurant industry for over 21 years, and I went to Johnson and Wales and Providence, Rhode Island. So I've spent a lot of my career in the restaurant industry.
I did want to note that the deputy police chief did recommend approval for the change in manager to Mr. Snepalsky. Wanted to open it up to board members for any comments or questions. All right, see none. I'll take a few. Mr. Snepalsky, is this, I know you had said that you've been the general manager there for the last year or so.
Yep.
Understanding that certainly changes will come as vaccination is more widely distributed and folks are more readily attending restaurants. Any other changes that we could anticipate, or is it just continued good service and food?
Doc, continue good service and food.
Good to hear. At this point, I'd recommend our entertaining motion to approve the request to the change, change the manager from Dennis A. Martin to Mr. Snepalsky.
Make the motion.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Mr. De Palma, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Discussion. See none. Mr. Bendel.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Chair, just to, before you move on, there's a couple of documents that the board will need to sign. Beverly's going to put them up on DocuServe, but it's, if you could make sure those get signed as soon as possible. We have three days to get the documents to the, to the ABCC. So that's pretty important.
Okay. Is she sending them over to me in email or?
No. The documents are going to be put on our DocuSign for board members to sign, and then the documents will be sent to the ABCC. And then once we get the response back from the ABCC, she can issue you the license.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. At this point, we are back on with Chief Kavanaugh and Corey Swift, the dispatch supervisor, to discuss some upgrades to the dispatch center of the public safety building. Mr. Swift, good evening.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Doing well. So this has been a bit in the making, but how is the new dispatch center looking?
We completed all the installation of the new equipment. We have four positions now, expanded from three. That process is completely over. Right now, we're just tightening up, making sure that all of our new systems are working the way that they should. And so far, it's been fine. We haven't had any complaints, anybody noticed. Everybody that has been working so far has been very, very happy with the new furniture. As you can see now with the screen share, we had a lot of old analog equipment that was removed. And in that removal process, a lot of the furniture that we had was just no longer suited our needs. So we now have nice standing desks, complete monitor arrays, so that everything that has now become digital is now making more sense. And we have a sit-stand option, more ergonomics, better lighting, and it's, it's worked much better. Everybody's thrilled. It's the first upgrade since the building was, you know, was occupied in 2001. So everybody's extraordinarily happy and very, very thankful that everybody in town decided to support this.
Glad to hear about it. Some of these pictures certainly are showing the picture of a really first-class looking facility.
Yep. Just like I said, we just have a few, few pieces left. Make sure that all the, some of the holes that you see there for computer monitors, we're working to fill those out and make sure that everybody has the tools they need. So it's 100% better.
Chief Kavanaugh, do you have anything to add to this process?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the board, Mr. Hull, Finance Committee for supporting this project. I know it was, you know, we've gone in a couple of different stages, and we've really, the town has invested quite a bit of resources in our communications, in our emergency dispatch center in the last couple of years and the next two years, hopefully as well, as we continue our radio project. This was a much-needed upgrade. This center handles about 40,000 calls for service every year between police, fire, EMS, along with numerous general business questions. So they, they did a great job, you know, really kind of coming together with Cory. Cory was really the mastermind behind how we were going to do this. He looked at a bunch of different options, really weighed out the benefit and the cost, and I think he put together a great product for them. It's, you know, an unbelievable change. It's almost like a totally different room. But also, I would say that, you know, going back to that teamwork aspect, George Hooper and Michael Burke and all of the public buildings department was unbelievable. They were super accommodating. IT, John, Andrew, Sue, I mean, I can't say enough about how helpful they were from the planning stages. We general, we kind of GC'd our own construction here. So there was a lot of moving parts that Cory and myself had to make sure we're hitting all at the same exact time. For a couple of weeks, we got the state 911 truck, and we were on a very, very tight window with that. So it was imperative that everything hit perfect, and it really did. I mean, you know, I know that we all have jobs, and we all kind of do what needs to be done. But really, in this case, they went above and beyond, you know, to just get things done last minute. Changes were never a problem with any of the departments. And, you know, I really think that, you know, the dispatchers that are working there, they, they really deserved the upgrade. They needed it, and it really kind of brings, brings it as a more attractive option for people in that, that part of the industry to want to come in and see something that's, it's state-of-the-art. This is an old, old technology. It's brand-new. There's nothing better out there. And very, very happy that that was supported on all the boards and by Mr. Hull. So thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. And Mr. Swift, thank you for you and what the dispatch department does. You folks are certainly necessary first responders. You guys handle calls on a very regular basis of people that are in crisis and need help, and you, your staff do an excellent job responding. I think circumstances that are always difficult. We usually call dispatch if they're having a good day. So please relay our support to you and your staff, because certainly what you folks do is appreciated, and we're glad that we can give you some of the tools to help you folks do your job.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, and I will.
Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cory, thank you, and chief, of course, thank you again. Great job, obviously. This looks fantastic. But I just want to commend you guys at dispatch. I mean, you guys haven't skipped a beat during this transition through this upgrade. Obviously, major renovations there. Haven't skipped a beat. So my wife and I are avid scanner listeners, so we know all your voices very well, and I commend you all. Do a great job, very professional. I mean, I get frazzled if someone tells me, called me and told me it's going to rain the next day. You guys handle all kinds of calls and always very professional, very helpful. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. De Palma, if you want to circle back on the mental health question you asked earlier?
Uh, no, it's just the question was, well, Cory, are you getting a lot of calls on mental health issues since COVID?
It's, it's been a, like the chief already reiterated, we had a, we had a real slow period when everybody first started to quarantine and stay home, the stay-at-home orders. Our business dropped to nothing, and then all of a sudden, it started picking up with the people with job loss and getting into the financial straits. So it's kind of those second and third order effects, and now it's starting to come out of the wash. It's been about a year, and people are starting to really get that panic feel. I don't know the exact numbers, but we are seeing an uptick in dealing with people with crisis, people seeking services. People just are looking to see what, what we can do for them. So it's not a, it's not overwhelming as of yet, but there is a, there is a noticeable difference in the number of calls we're getting for people that are in crisis and need help.
Thank you. Also, I want to compliment you. When we talk public safety, we always talk fire, police, EMS. People don't understand in the background what you do, and I compliment you. Without you, no one would be getting the services that they're getting. And I just want to compliment you and your staff on a great job. I am also an avid scanner listener, and I hear you out there, and I hear the calmness in your voices. General public's going to hear it too, listening on the scanners, and they're going to feel more comfort. And again, I just want to compliment you and your staff. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And just, I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't add that. My staff, I would, I would rank them as one of the top in the state. We have phenomenal people. They did a great job. Didn't skip a beat when we went out to the truck. As far as I can tell, nobody from the public knew any different. Some of the responders made a guess only because there was a big giant truck in the back. But yes, I appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you.
All right. There's no other comments. Just enjoy the new space, Mr. Swift, and keep up the exceptional work that you folks do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good evening to you and both, both you and Chief Kavanaugh. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hull, you get to walk us through communication. Mr. Hull, you get to walk us through communications.
Yes, first item under Communications is a joint memo from Superintendent Brandon and myself. Just recapping a Zoom session that we had amongst other representatives from the town, including the Chair and Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Chair of the School Committee, Mr. Brand, and others with the MSBA to discuss the Core Program, which we were one of 15 communities, new communities, that were, are being considered for invitation into this so-called Core Program. The MSBA Board of Directors will be making their decisions either at their meeting in April or June as to whether to invite Wilmington into the program, which, as you know, similar to what was done with the high school, would be an opportunity to get state assistance, financial assistance with respect to the schools, specifically the Wildwood School. If, in fact, there is an invitation and we are accepted in, there are certain requirements that we are obligated to hit on. The first being that within 270 days of the so-called commencement date into the program, we would need to be able to come up with the funds to finance a feasibility and schematic design. Also, within that period, we would have to establish a school building committee. And then, there's a MSBA enrollment document that, that would need to be completed. MSBA advised us that even though the Wildwood, as we indicated, is the priority school, that, that we really need to be presenting them with a more focused indication as to the options that we want to study, whether it be consolidation. And if that is the case, the, the number of consolidations, grade transitions, and so on. So, at this point, Superintendent Brandon and I have a, another scheduled call with MSBA later this week. Next is correspondence from me to the board with regard to the efforts to inform the public about the change in venue and time for the annual town meeting. So, as everyone knows, well, as many know, but certainly everyone will know by the time we're done here, the town meeting will be held at the Shriners Auditorium. Per the vote at the last annual town meeting, the start time is now going to be changed to nine in the morning. And as the memo indicates, we've already taken some steps, including posting this information on the town's website in a couple of places. We've used Twitter to get the information out. Wilmington Apple has been contacted. Going forward, we'll include this information in the, in the upcoming edition of Town Topics. We'll also continue to issue Twitter announcements periodically. A very similar process we're taking here to what was done to announce the, the election in November. We'll use the Rotary Signboard, the Signboard at the Roman House, our two electronic signboards, send out a postcard, and all the different tools we used previously to inform the public about these changes. Next, under Correspondence, is a listing of the articles that were submitted via petition. As you know, the deadline for petitioned articles was this past Friday, and I'll just start at the top and identify what is on the table, so to speak. The first one being Petitioner Brandon Finn, seeking to purchase town-owned property, map 40, parcels 100 and 101 on Morton Street. And this illustration shows the parcels just off of Parker, which, as you know, is off of Lowell Street. Next is a request from Christopher Stokes. We've received these periodically. This is to essentially grant an exception to the age requirement for seeking employment by the Fire Department, followed by another request for town-owned property. Michael and Haley O'Connor, 55, map 55, parcel 228A, Lake Street. As shown here, it's a small piece of property on the lakeside of Lake Street. We have a request from Janet Ingram to name the soccer field at the North Intermediate. So, this is a naming request. We have a request from David Romano to rezone from residential 60 to residential 20. Map, maps are three parcels 15, which is 417 Andover Street. You can see it outlined in blue here. Request from Tanya and Carlos Miranda, seeking to purchase town-owned land behind 12 Ohio Street, Ohio Street being off of Nichols Street, off of Shawshank Ave. We have a request from Craig Newhouse, purchase town-owned land, map six, parcels 149 and 150, Stanley Street, which is off of Burlington Ave. You can see the outlined in blue. Next is a request from Philip Thomas Vere, purchase town-owned land on 848 Woburn Street, just right near the industrial way intersection there. Jonathan Main, seeking a rezoning from general business to neighborhood mixed use, map 40, parcels 11 and 13. This is Cross Street, right across from the Yentile Park. This property, in fact, was recently purchased. It had been held in a, in a trust for quite some time. Property was recently purchased, I believe in November, December. Next is a request from Michael Falkenheim, town-owned properties, looking to purchase, map nine, parcel 56, Aldrich Road. Again, outlined in blue. We have requests from Michael J. Newhouse to rezone from residential 60 to highway industrial, map one parcel 2A, map two parcel 19A, and map 103, parcels 24 and 24A. And then, also to rezone from general industrial to highway industrial, map one, parcel 1A. So, those are, again, outlined in the, in the blue. The next one is a, again, a petition article from Michael J. Newhouse to offer the town the opportunity to acquire by gift, map R1 parcel 1, which is right off of Route 125. The next one is a request from Margaret McKenna to amend the zoning bylaw. This is, would be section 3.5.8 of the Table of Principal Uses. On the property, it's just almost across the street from the library. And the proposal is to revise the principal use regulation. Again, this next one, same property, rezone from residential 10 to neighborhood mixed use, map 66 parcel 15, which is 168 Middlesex Avenue. And then, the final request is from Michael J. Newhouse to amend the zoning bylaw, section 3.5.19 of Table Principal Uses, section 3.8.14. Next is a notice of a grant request, a grant that the town has received thanks to the efforts of the Wilmington Economic Development Committee. This was submitted back in December. And it is a, it's called a Economic Development Local Rapid Response Grant or Initiative, and it's really, it's in-kind services. Recipients of this grant will receive the services of a consultant to first identify what the causes of either vacancies or business struggles in a particular designated area are. It's a, really intended to be a highly focused and rapid response, as the title indicates, to try to identify some of the challenges or barriers, and then prescribe some fixes, if you will, that will at least begin to reinvigorate the businesses on a short-term to intermediate-term basis. The target area in this case is the Main Street corridor. And from what I'm understanding, the introduction to this program will be via a webinar in late February that the consultant will participate in and certainly will, would expect that representatives from the Economic Development Committee will do so as well. Next is the, it's an update on the Senior Center project. So, as you know, the firm P3 was hired as the owner's project manager. Their task over the last several weeks has been to put together a request for proposal, request for qualifications, rather, for a designer or architect that RFQ went out to bid. The bid, the proposals were due on the 4th of February. We received 12 proposals. The P3 is now going through them to confirm that they're all qualified. And then, those proposals, the members of the Senior Center Building Committee will be contacted to pick up the documents, the package. And the expectation is that the members of the committee will review the individual proposals and rate them, similar to what was done previously to hire the OPM, coming up with a short list. George Hooper, the Chair, will be in touch with the members to look at some possible Zoom dates to confer and come up with a short list of proponents, and ultimately interview them and make a recommendation to me. Next is correspondence from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. This is with regard to the Verizon license renewal. So, they are in the process of completing their first cable license, which was a 15-year license. And the notice is basically advising us that the renewal process is coming up and that we need to be completing a review. Both of our, complete the ascertainment process, which is essentially trying to identify what we're seeking in the way of cable services, and then also review their proposals. So, that is, it's just informing us that we need to be on target for that. Next is communication and email from Alicia Fraser, who's with the Mass Department of Public Health. I've periodically reached out to her to get a status on the cancer study. This has been an ongoing effort for many, many years, but honestly, far too many in my estimation. But she responds, "Thank you for reaching out. My apologies for the brief delay in responding to your email. Internal reviews of the study is progressing. I'm anticipating that I'll be able to reach out to you and other stakeholders within the next month to start scheduling private briefings of the study's results. I will be in touch with your office and the Wilmington Board of Health and the Community Advisory Committee as soon as the study is ready for release. Thank you for continued patience, and we are committed to releasing the study as soon as possible." So, still no definitive time, but hopefully, we will hear something more concrete soon. Next, we have correspondence from Dan Deutsch. As you know, under the Surface Transportation Order, both the town and New England Trans-Rail are required to submit quarterly status reports with the STB on any changes or any progress with regard to the NET filing. Essentially, we've been in a holding pattern for quite a period of time, and Attorney, Attorney Deutsch confirms that here by stating that really, the, the next step is governed by when EPA issues their final remediation order, and then, the expectation is that once that happens, that there may be further information provided by New England Trans-Rail, and the town remains open to at least hearing what they have to offer. So, kind of a status quo at this point. Next, in the final correspondence comes from EPA. This is with regard to the containment area. If you recall, there was, it was revealed to the town in latter part of 2020 that there was a breach of this containment area, the material that was intended to protect the containment area. EPA has required that Olin provide a, a plan to establish how they're going to correct the problem and fortify the protective area. They submitted, they being Olin, submitted a, a plan which Olin, which EPA essentially indicated that it wasn't sufficient, and EPA is now looking for Olin to submit a revised plan by February 26. And, and the document that they submit here also includes commentary on some of the deficiencies that they believe exist in Olin's initial plan. I would say that EPA's commentary here is based, I think, in, at least in part, on some of the comments that they received from GeoInsight, who is our environmental engineer on this project. So, we'll wait to see what we receive by before the 26th of February.
Mr. Chair?
Kira.
On that, on that correspondence to Mr. Hull, is this being forwarded to GeoInsight?
Yes, anything that comes in on these items goes to Geo. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hull, and that's it for Communications. Thank you for that. Next up is the order-to-consider item of establishing kennel license fees. In your packet, members have a memorandum from Mr. Conway, our town clerk, regarding the proposed kennel license fees for approval. She notes that uninhabited bylaws do permit the actual kennel licensing permits, but the Board of Selectmen has never established a fee for these licenses. The amount of efforts that, or the effort that is required of the town to check in and make sure that any kennels are operating safely is done largely by both the Board of Health and the Animal Control Officer. And Mr. Conway has recommended the following fee schedule. An annual fee of $50 for a kennel of a capacity of between one and four dogs, an annual fee of $100 for a kennel with a capacity between five and 15 dogs, and an annual fee of $150 for a kennel with a capacity of 16 dogs or more. She also provided a fee schedule for a number of the communities in our area, including Andover, Burlington, Minfield, North Andover, West Reading, Redding, Tewksbury, and Woburn. And the fee schedule that Mr. Conway has recommended is within that, I guess, within market of those area communities. That time, I would add a motion on Mr. Conway's recommendation to establish kennel license fees.
Make a motion.
Mr. De Palma, you can second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Seconded by Ms. Omohani. Discussion.
Do we have any kennels right now in Wilmington?
Yes, we do. We have Yes, we do. We have two, actually. One is on 555 Main Street. The other is on 296 Shawshin Ave. This all came up as a result of a question that Shelley raised to the town clerk, I guess, as part of a review that she was doing. She noticed that one of the kennels wasn't licensed and inquired about that. And then when Tina looked into it and determined that we did not have license fees. So this is where this came about.
Were the size of those kennels, any chance?
I do not.
For the discussion.
Has there been any issues, Jeff, with the kennels, with the residents?
Not that I'm aware of. I think this is really just, you know, once we identified the fact that we have these kennels but no fees, you know, and we need to really update the process for licensing. This is really just a kind of a matter of crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. So, you know, the plan is that if a fee schedule is established, the next step will be to submit to each of the two kennels the information that they will need to complete an application for the license. They would need to be, their kennels would be inspected by the Animal Control Officer, confirm that they're conforming to zoning or grandfathered. And then the Board of Health would have the final review before authorizing the licenses.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Bendel?
No.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. DePamela?
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni?
Yes.
Now, I mean, yes, as well. Passes 4 to 1. On to public comments. Mr. O'Neill, do we have any callers?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
All right. So I'll just read the information that you put on the screen. To dial, to make your public comment, please dial 1646-558-8656. You'll then enter the meeting ID, which is 82978545537. You'll have to press pound and then press pound again at the next voice prompt. And to raise a virtual hand, you'll need to press star 9. I'll give it a minute in case anybody is dialing in now. Mr. O'Neill, do we have any one please calling in?
We do not.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. We're going to move on to announcements. Any announcements from the board? Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three quick ones. I want to congratulate one of the nicest people you meet, Friendly, served the town for a long time. She's set to retire very shortly. I want to congratulate Linda Golden in the clerk's office. Also want to congratulate Beth Lawrence and Bob Beal, who will be stepping up to fill that position. So congrats to both of them. And then I want to give a shout out to the DPW, who has had a challenging week, worked their tails off, and did a great job clearing the streets. And it looks like we've got some more snow coming. And I know they've been working really hard throughout this storm. So congrats to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Any other announcements?
Just, I know I'm going to make it about me because that's what I do. And my kids say I do that all the time. I just want to wish an early happy birthday to Patrick John Omahaoni III, who is going to be able to vote legally in 10 days. And I know I don't look old enough to have an 18-year-old child, but I'm very proud of him. It's been a very difficult senior year for him and his classmates. And I just wanted to make sure that I put that on the record, that I'm going to have an 18-year-old in 10 days.
Ms. Dalton will be sure to include.
Make sure it's in the minutes, babe.
Patrick John Omahaoni III. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Seeing none. Important dates, Mr. Hall.
Important dates. So the next Finance Committee meeting is tomorrow evening. Again, all of these are virtual. This is with the Public Buildings Department, 7:00 PM. On the 11th, Finance Committee will be meeting with the Library, Recreation, Historical Commission, again, all 7:00. The 15th is President's Day. Town offices are closed. The 22nd is Board of Selectmen's Meeting, 7:00 PM. February 23rd, Finance Committee, again, Police Department, Public Safety, Public Dispatch, and the Fire Department. February 25th, Finance Committee will be meeting with the town clerk and IT. March 2nd, again, Finance Committee, 7:00 PM, Shawshin Tech. March 4th, Finance Committee, 7:00 PM, Wilmington Public Schools. March 8th is another Board of Selectmen's Meeting, 7:00 PM. March 16th, the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing relative to the warrant for the annual town meeting, again, 7:00 PM virtual. March 18th is the Finance Committee will be meeting to decide upon their recommendations. And then, just as a reminder, May 1st, the annual town meeting starts at 9:00 AM at the Shriners Auditorium.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Last item on our agenda is our salute to service this week. This week, I'd like to recognize and salute Mr. Walter E. Moran. Mr. Moran is a veteran of World War II and Korea, serving in the Merchant Marines in World War II, in the Army in Korea. Mr. Moran was awarded the Occupation Medal for Japan, the Korean Service Medal, the five Bronze Service Stars, and the Presidential Unit Citation, among other medals and awards. Mr. Moran was honorably discharged in 1952 in the rank of Sergeant First Class. He's a longtime Wilmington resident, is very active in the Senior Center and the Veterans Committee in Wilmington, attending all Veterans events, and he proudly wears his World War II/Korean Veteran Hat. Mr. Moran is a perfect example of the Greatest Generation, and we should all be honored to have men like Walter, who gave so much for our country and live in our community. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Omahaoni, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Mr. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. DePamela?
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I will make it unanimous. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.